I'd like to welcome everybody. This is a special council meeting, South Russell Village Council. It's a public hearing. This fellow officer will take the role.
Ken.
Here.
Ken, I'm here.
Here.
Quarter.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Trigger.
Here. Okay. Today is Monday, November fourteenth, six P M, twenty twenty-two. Tonight, we're having a special South Russell council meeting. The reason for today's council meeting is to hold a public hearing about a request for residents to change code six eighteen point one-three, requiring a two-acre minimum of property to house goats. Since this is a special council meeting, it is a one-item agenda. We can have no conversations about taxes, roads, stormwater, things like that. After this special council meeting, it'll be a regular council meeting, starts at seven o'clock. I would imagine requests for a code change will be mentioned during the regular council meeting. However, I would also imagine that no action would be taken by council tonight. This will give residents who attend tonight's special council meeting, who observe on our YouTube channel, or who are just learning about the request to change their zoning code, a chance to comment to council about the request. I'd also imagine council might make a decision at our council meeting on Monday, November twenty-eighth, that's the Monday after Thanksgiving. And those are the things that I'm imagining, because I don't know what will happen. We're here tonight because a resident made a request to have a change of code. The building committee oversees the code, so the issue was assigned to the building committee. Building Committee Chair, uh, Member Canton, will speak about the discussions that had occurred at the building committee meetings during the court hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here. Several weeks ago, it came to the attention of council that a family who lives in the Lake Louise community would seek modification of code six one eight point one. This request falls under the offices of the Building Committee. Committee Chair, and Councilman Bell is a member. Councilman Bell and I built an imperative to seek information and to hear the views not only from Lake Louise residents, but also from the entire community of South Russell. We are here today to listen, not to make a decision. That will come after our research is completed. Thank you.
This, this is a public hearing, obviously. It's being recorded and videoed. Anyone can watch on our YouTube channel, but cannot orally participate. So if you're out there, uh, watching us right now, you can only watch. You can also see the video of this special council meeting while going to our YouTube channel anytime you want. We will begin the meeting in about a minute. Each participant is going to be given three minutes to speak. Participants will be selected from the attendance sheet, first come, first served. So when you sign in, we'll go off this sheet. There's a new sheet there, so if you haven't signed in yet and you'd like to speak, you need to get on that attendant sheet, which I guess is on the corner of the. You may pass if you don't want to speak for the first time through. Uh, hopefully you'd have a second chance to speak. When your name is called, please proceed to the microphone. Leave the mic in the stand and give your name and address. It's, it's not amplifying our sound, it is simply for our YouTube channel so people can hear us. After two minutes, Councilmember Canton or I will raise a finger to let you know that you have one minute left. When your three minutes are left, please be seated. I do not expect, again, I do not expect a motion for or against the request to change our code to occur at tonight's meeting. Council needs time to hear from residents. If you disagree with something you hear tonight, I ask that you disagree without being disagreeable. Tonight's a public hearing to hear from the public, it's not a debate. Our first person is at forty-two Ridge Crest, uh, Ms. Peters, would you like to speak?
Pass.
Pass. Our second person lives at thirty-one Gardner Park, Patrick, would you like to speak?
I'll pass.
Pass. Third person lives at thirty-one Garden Park, Carleen, would you like to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Yeah.
My name is Carleen Holtz. Who am I speaking to, you or you?
It's a public hearing, so the council is here to hear from you.
My name is Carleen Holtz. I, uh, live at thirty-one Garden Park Drive in Lake Louise. Been a resident there for three years, I believe. Um, I'm here to speak about codes tonight, which I know all of you know the acronym for GOAT, which is greatest all time. And I want to just say that if I take that acronym as a personal reference to myself and my family, that this time in my life has been the greatest time in my life. I have an opportunity, sorry, to teach these two beautiful girls. My oldest is twenty-eight, who I also homeschooled. Um, and she's now a speech pathologist, was in Colorado, very successful. And when I was blessed with, um, my family and had the opportunity to bring these girls on to teach them what I've been able to be successful in, like teaching my oldest daughter, who, um, ironically, we had goats, and we had chickens, and we lived a very, um, we lived in an HOA in Monson. I had wonderful, beautiful neighbors who thought what we were doing was amazing. We didn't have a farm, we didn't want a farm. We lived in an HOA because we wanted community and I wanted safe space for my daughter to grow up. We moved to Lake Louise, my husband grew up there. Um, I got the opportunity to live there, I was a Shugren kid. Um, but I was out in Burton for twenty-two years, not on a farm, just in Burton, building my business. And then we, we came here. So we're asking tonight that you take into consideration of the educational element. Both of our girls were diagnosed with learning disabilities. Um, that's why they're home. Um, we're working really hard to get them back into Shugren schools. And, um, the, the goats are a, a good example of responsibility. It's not like having a dog, a dog barks at you and tells you what they want. Goats need tended to, they need love, they're social animals. They, um, they just want to be with you. Um, they don't chase anybody down the road, they don't bark at you. They, they don't do anything that most of our dogs in our neighborhood do. You know, poop in our yards and chase our neighbors and, um, do things that, you know, I've got to have individual friends of my dogs to protect other dogs and, and, and to be respectful in our community, so, you know, I mean, goats are just a different breed. And, um, and it's a difference, it's a different animal altogether.
One minute left.
If you're not familiar with them, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Um, they are literally thirty pounds, they won't get any bigger than maybe thirty-five pounds. Um, they're smaller than my chocolate lab. And, um, like I said, we didn't get these goats to make a statement or cause any trouble in our neighborhood. Like, we literally got these goats because I've done it before. My daughter was in four H, it taught her responsibility, it taught her to know how to be part of the community, taught her how to public speak. Um, and that's what I want for our family, so that's why we're here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is, uh, resident thirty-six Ridge Crest, Cheryl Mongley.
Pass.
Pass. Um, Bob Mongley.
Rock pass.
Thirty-one Garden Park, Quinn. Under office. There you go. Yes, uh, one five nine one, have one shout.
Yeah.
All neighbors, pass, huh? Um, I'm not in the neighborhood, um, I'm on Hanlock. Um, I bought up to the Shugren Heights subdivision. This subdivision has been, um, abhorred, um, because of the way it's plotted. They're very small, fifty-foot lots, um, they're less than two acres. And the reason I'm here to, to petition against is not because I don't want the goats, not because I don't want kids, um, but we have to protect our neighborhoods and changing, um, uh, regulation about the size of a lot, um, for one family changes it for every family in South Russell. Um, the lots there are small, I don't think they could support, um, a goat, not alone, multiple goats. Um, there's no regulation as to how many goats, um, a person's allowed to have. So I am adamant that, you know, we don't allow them in smaller lots, um, because literally there's hundreds of lots down in the Shugren Heights subdivision, um, that could be affected by this. Thank you.
Okay, um, next is at one eighteen countryside, Brett.
I always want to be over. Can I have my class? Hello, everyone, Brett Furkman, uh, one eighteen countryside, I've been preparing speech. This is mostly about Russians. I am more so against the idea, uh, but I'll be honest, forgive my network on ignorant side. I don't know the difference in goats, but I see the ones on the internet, that screen and all over. It's a concern, uh, I don't know if that's the same kind of goat. Uh, I have concerns about how they're housed, or where they're housed, um, in terms of sheds, barns, whatever that case may be. Uh, we're in a different HOA, which has some rules, if you will, and questioning on it. Uh, but those are more so my real concerns about, uh, those. I, again, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, one twenty-eight countryside, uh, Tom, follow.
I'll pass for them.
Uh, thirty Ridge Crest, Kevin Goodman.
Good evening, Kevin Goodman, thirty Ridge Crest Drive in Lake Louise. And, um, I live across the street from the set house and, um, a couple of comments about that house. Prior to their living there, uh, maintenance was a little low and since they've gotten there, they've built some beautiful gardens throughout the property. So I recognize, um, the value they have in the community and the value they have in their home by the, by the changes and improvements they've made from painting, from, uh, the gardens, which are surrounding the whole property. And I think a nice idea would indeed be a fence, and they indeed built a fence. So in nineteen eighty, up until nineteen eighty-seven, I lived in Hunting Valley and we had two goats and three horses. And the, um, goats were fed, feed, so they didn't demand pasture time in the sense of eating. And, um, they were good animals. So I'll move to the thought of what is the American Disabilities Act? And my son, um, one of my sons, throughout the years, had multiple service animals. And these animals range from mice, dogs, cats, the list goes on, gecko. And, um, you know, in the way in which he suffered in his special needs, certainly animals were a big part of the component of his healing and growth. The ability to learn, nurturing and love and care for an animal when it was difficult to relate to people. And I think the American Disability Act calls for freedom of these sorts of liberties, um, within reason. I think the quantity of goats and the fence is most important. And once that is met, I have no objection, in fact, um, look forward to seeing them back on the property.
If you happened to come in and did not get on the sign-in sheet, please, if you'd like to speak, we're going off that sign-in sheet, so I don't know where it is, but if you want to speak, get your name on the sign-in sheet. Next is twenty-five Garden Park.
Pass.
Mr. Lee, pass. Next is fifty-five Garden Park.
I'll pass for him.
Pass. Next is thirty, thirty-three, thirty-six, uh, Garden Ridge Crest, Tracy.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Tracy Goodman, um, at thirty Ridge Crest, and again, that was my husband, we live right across the street. And, um, you know, it was interesting because again, like my husband said, we, we saw all the work being done across the street and, um, and I saw, I saw the fence, and honestly, the goats were there and I didn't even know. Um, there was a knock on the door and he said, I just want you to know that we have these goats. And I was like, huh, I was wondering, I was wondering what the fence was, I had no idea. So the concern, I mean, and it is a good point. I would never complain about the dogs in the neighborhood. Like, I, I hear dogs bark, and we have a dog, but I hear dogs barking all the time. She's right, poop all over the place. And I, again, so I just have, when, when we're talking about, um, you know, the animals being destructive or whatever, there, again, I did not even know the goats were there. And we are exactly across the street. So, um, I'm, I'm, like my husband, I feel very, I feel supportive, I feel like it's a great thing for the family. I guess the one thing that was brought up is that this change will impact all the other, um, um, all the other homes. So I guess my question, and I don't know who can answer that, what's the, what's the implication of that? If, if, I, I don't know why that is, like, I would like to explain that to you, why would that be? What, how would that impact others and why would that be a bad thing? I know our property is over an acre, um, I'm not sure what their, their size is. Two, yours is almost, almost two, yeah, it's a big, it's a, it's, it's big. It, I don't think it is a small property at all, it's, it's, it's a large property. They use up a lot of it and then a lot of it's not even being used, so they have plenty of space. So, um, the other thing I really am supportive of is, um, anything that we can do to support families with special needs and homeschooling families, come on, go for that. Bye.
Dave. Sixteen Louise Drive, Gary.
Yeah.
If you haven't signed in on the sign-in sheet, please.
Second one?
Uh, there's a second one coming around.
This is, this is the regular council meeting.
Okay, is anybody? All right. You're on the radio. It's a public hearing, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So. Okay, I'm, uh, my name's Gary Mittenberg, I'm sixteen Louise Drive. And, uh, I have a daughter who has a farm in Delaware, Ohio, and she just got goats. She's got pigs, she's got horses, and for her, it's so important to have these animals around. She has, she doesn't have children in her case, but that's the one thing that, uh, you know, I don't have, um, these goats. But I do have a couple of questions. I didn't, what I don't know right now is how many goats, is there a limit? And two, when it comes to property and is this a single variance for one home? Or is this something that would get passed and would apply to every home in the community? Thank you.
Okay, if anybody did not sign in and would like to speak, if you didn't get a second, sign in.
There is a second.
All right, I always want to go around.
Evening, my name is Carl Marish, I live at twelve Louise Drive, uh, which is, I guess, four or five houses from, uh, from the houses. Um, the way the lots are in Lake Louise, I think I'm through the backyards, two houses north of them. So my backyard is probably got the football field to my backyard. Um, as much as I'm here to, you know, as much as I love to support my neighbors and what they want to do, ultimately, I think this is bad for South Russell, I think it's bad for my property value, and I'm here to seek an acquisition to it. Um, and I've got four or five comments. The first one is, this is a pretty significant request. Um, you know, when you put together a zoning code for municipality, it governs the scheme by which property is developed and managed. And for certain things, you know, governments allow variances and they set forth ways to get a variance, things you need to show. They don't do that for livestock, and that's not an accident, in my view. The only way they can do this is to amend the code, which is going to affect property values and the scheme all over South Russell. And I am opposed to it and I think it's just a bad idea to do it that way. This is not a single property variance, this affects everything. Uh, the second point is, I think it's instructive to look at the South Russell zoning map, uh, when considering this request. The zoning map, um, you know, governs what can be done on various properties and in order to have livestock, you have to have more than two acres. And there's two sets of zoning that allows more than two acres, if it's, uh, R one C and R one D. And these are all the big lots east of Lake Louise, north and south of Bell, that have large lots and would have the capacity to have livestock. This is not intended to be, when they, probably the zoning map, you know, since nineteen sixty-eight, was not intended, in my view, to apply to residential neighborhoods with one-acre lots. The third point is, I think doing this is a significantly slippery slope and some of the comments that people have made tonight sort of illustrate that. You know, how many goats can you have? I'm sure there are data on how much land is needed for each goat. What if people want to now have cows on one-acre lots? What size fence needs to, to be put in place to accommodate these kind of uses? And I think doing this, uh, and amending the code this way is a significant slippery slope. Finally, um, I think the zoning code is in place for a reason. I believe in strong zoning and, um, I think amending the code in this manner would, uh, change the character of my neighborhood in a way that, that would not improve it, in my view, and would negatively affect my property value. And as much as I support, you know, the, the theme behind having goats, there are plenty of properties you can buy in South Russell or otherwise where you can have goats, uh, and this would not be appropriate for my neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, there is a second sign-in sheet going around now, is that correct? Okay, I have that where it is.
There is a second sheet?
No, nobody else has signed in, well, okay, second.
There's a second one.
All right.
Give your name and address. John Relia, ten fifty-seven Sherbrooke. Um, I, I'm against changing the zoning. Um, not every lot in South Russell is almost two acres. This is going to impact every lot in our community. Um, where do you stop? To the point that was made earlier and in fact, some of the other people who are supporting? Well, they have goats, well, okay, we're already referencing small pigs in, in the, um, petition to allow us to have goats, well, now we have goats. Okay, well, now someone's going to say, how can you turn down sheep? Well, turn down sheep, you know, how can you then not turn down other farming? I think at some point, we have zoning for a reason. We live in a community, these rules existed before any of us probably bought our houses. We, we knew what they were coming in. And, uh, if I had to live even across the street, I think is different. If I had to live next door to one, where you were hearing them, where you were smelling them, where you had to deal with them, I don't think that's something, that's not, we came for greenery, but we didn't come to live on a farm or an farm animal. If we wanted to do that, we would have moved further out to have farm, farm animals. Now, as, as, uh, you know, I understand kids with special needs. I have someone in my family with special needs, that individual has a therapy dog. That therapy dog is working, I understand the dog isn't a goat, but there are other options for children and adults with special needs, many other options that fit within zoning. Don't see the point of changing zoning and allowing farm animals in what can be narrow lots that can smell and make noise when you have many other options to provide therapy experience for kids.
Okay, anybody from the original sign-in sheet who didn't get to speak, Patrick?
My name is Patrick Holtz, I live at Garden Park Drive in Lake Louise, I, I love Lake Louise. And the overall theme of this evening is to be loved by neighbor. And, um, I could do just a quick history lesson on, on this part of the code in South Russell Village. As a basic premise within Lake Louise, within our HOA regs, um, there's, the only real prohibition that we have is a prohibition on animals, and that is a pig. Um, and that was in nineteen fifty-six, I believe, is our HOA regs. Um, you can take that and go through the time machine to the nineteen sixty-six, that's when you see really, um, where South Russell Village was confronted with the question of, of changing the ordinances to reflect the changing of South Russell Village. Where changing from what was purely a rural environment to a rural semi-rural environment. Um, and it makes some sense, if you look at this even in the history of northeast Ohio, really, when you look at it, it's, it's the huff riots in nineteen sixty-six that really changed the dynamic in northeast Ohio. Where folks were really questioning whether that they should be in Kiva County, Newtage County, which by its own way changed the way that you used land. And so our forefathers had the vision to say to themselves, who did they want to be in nineteen sixty-six? And then therefore, this is what the ordinance looks like. They want to, they worked very hard to create these developments. The idea then of folks coming from the city and creating farms were concerning for them. I mean, the most popular TV show at that time was what? It was Green Acres. The most virulent animal was what? It was the pig. And then, uh, as northeast Ohio grew and grew and grew, South Russell had the good sense in two thousand and fourteen, actually met the ordinance to reflect the needs of the family for a pet pig. And that right now is the ordinance now, everyone in South Russell Village could have a pet pig. Irregardless of the, you can have a pet pig. We're suggesting that, in the same way to apply it to goats. And then I think we really need to also be sensitive to, um, that we're changing in northeast Ohio and in South Russell Village. We have unfortunately this case of growth without straw and you see East Washington Street and the, the nature of East Washington Street creep slowly into South Russell. And there's attributes of a semi-rural environment we have to maintain or it will be gone. And goats, yes, are part of that conversation, and yes, cows are part of that conversation. Pigs, we've already crossed the chasm with pigs, good, keep going. We need to maintain our semi-rural nature in South Russell Village. And, uh, and this, and this would be wonderful for our family, but again, Dave, it's about love by neighbor. We've worked hard and did due process on this. We, we did a petition, we've done meetings, we're now doing a, but here tonight, this is what, this is the best in local government this evening, so I thank you.
Ryan, you're going to be next when I get this figured out. I don't think I figured it out, Ryan, I think it was, uh, no, hang on. Okay, next, Ryan, give your, uh, answer, so I can get it.
Hi, I'm Grace Satch, eleven Bruce Crest, I'm a neighbor of Patrick's. And, um, I like animals. We've had animals, we have animals, my kids did four H. And, um, some of the animals that we weren't allowed to have, we kept in a farm new area because, you know, we wanted to have our neighbors still be friends with us. But we had the animals we were allowed to have and, um, you know, I, I don't see this as, I think Patrick would be a wonderful and his family would be the wonderful homeowners, like, they take care of their things. But I, I, I just see the big picture and not what's here today, but five years from now, ten years from now, you know, what happens if somebody has goats or pigs and they're not good pet caretakers? Our, um, neighboring township, neighboring township is governed by Ohio advice code. And their animal laws are actually. And their animal laws are actually stricter than South Russell Village. You know, you can only have three chickens in a subdivision, no roosters. You couldn't have a goat or a pig or a sheep, even if you have two acres or 2.95 acres. Five acres and above, you're exempt from, you know, zoning, and you can have whatever animal you want. But I just wonder, you know, if this was granted for people that aren't like Patrick and his family, that would be good caretakers, how do you control that? How do you police that? You know, Newberry Township has a problem with that, with people that have the animals that they're not supposed to. It doesn't go away. So that's my only point. It's not for, you know, what's here, what's now. How will this be governed? Who would control it? How do you do that? It's tough. And there are people that are pet owners that are not good pet owners. And we try and do things they're not supposed to, and it's just tough to enforce. So that's my only point.
Anybody else out there did not get a chance to speak? All right, name an address, please.
Hello, my name is Mason Holt, and I live on Garden Park Drive, 31. And just to answer a few of you guys' questions about goats, the goats that we want are miniature goats. And they're not even miniature goats. A miniature goat is like a piggy goat. So a piggy goat is about this big. That's our goat's father. Okay, he's this big. Our goats are this big, okay? They are smaller than our dogs. And they're not going to tear up, they could tear up your yard, yes, they could. But we have gardens. We don't want them getting into our gardens. So we would keep, and I am them. Yes, they could smell bad, but you know what? We are going to make sure they don't smell bad. We care about the community. We do. We really do. Okay? We don't want it to smell bad. We don't want it to ruin this community. Because yes, I can see that a person might not take care of their animals. But getting into having animals like, let's say, somebody wants a goat, we're getting into that, they should know that this animal requires a lot of responsibility. And yes, I do have a disability, and the goats would help me and my sister a lot. And yes, we could get a dog or a cat, but it's like a school, okay? If this school doesn't fit right for you, then you go to a different school. If this dog or cat does not work for me, I get a different animal. That's why I have, I have birds. And these birds, I love these birds so much. And when people look at it, and they're like, oh, a bird, it will fly away. Aren't birds mean? But they, they are so sweet. I love them so much. I really do. And these goats would really help me and my family, and they could potentially help other people. And we want to do this for the community, but I shall love the neighbor, okay? So we would follow the proper terms. Thank you.
Anybody else that's not had a chance to speak? Yes, please. Name an address, please.
My name is Mary Elko. I'm at 1470 Bell Road. And I came here to listen tonight, but I can also tell you that as an owner of four sheep and seven chickens and two daughters and 4-H, that I support a family that would like outdoor pets. Jetha County has always prided itself in its ownership of livestock stock in 4-H, and we have one of the greatest county fairs. And it's also voted one of the greatest places to raise a family, and I don't think that that's a coincidence there. So I'm sure that the council can come up with an amendment that wouldn't say precedents, you know, the ownership of awful lot of pets would be a little bit... Thank you.
Okay, anybody else that didn't get a first chance? Do it.
I'd like to give you some room to the proud of Rest County. Thank you, Jim Omi-Ezra, 1087 Shearbrook. I was asked to come speak tonight from the perspective of homeowners association. So I'm the president of Shrin Lakes HOA, and years ago was president of Fallwood One. So having my experience in those roles, I will tell you that, you know, one, this does apply village-wide. And when you look at our plan at subdivisions, this is, you know, the R1A zoning. But most of our R1A neighborhoods are not 1A. So you've got Bellwood, Bell Meadow, they're pretty much one-acre lots. But you get into Shrin Lakes, it's one-acre density, but most of our lots are three-quarters of an acre of that. And you go into some of the other neighborhoods, country estates, what the villages' law do over the years was cluster these homes. And so we have one-acre density, but our lots are very small residential lots. Another unique aspect of our zoning is we have grandfathered in the setbacks for the various neighborhoods. So when Bellwood was built, the side draft setbacks were 10 feet. When Shrin Lakes was built, the side draft setbacks were 10 feet. And that's still the setback. So we don't impose the larger setbacks on the older neighborhoods. And so our houses are pretty close together. The house I lived in, I'll leave you, was about 22 feet away from my neighbor's house. So you have to look at this at the perspective of the different neighborhoods. You know, this house is a little less than one and a half acres on the corner of a street. But in my neighborhood, you've got, you know, pretty tight lots, the houses very close together. And our zoning does allow flexibility. If you have a five-acre lot in a residential zone area, you can have full-blown agriculture in South Russell. So we do allow flexibility even within the village, and there's other places you can move in the counties that offer a lot more flexibility. From the HOA perspective, let me say this. We have different levels of regulations in our homeowners associations. Ours were written in the 60s. Bellwood's expired in the 90s. Bell Meadow doesn't have any. And when council changes ordinances like this, you're pushing those hard decisions and those battles down to the HOA level. And we have to expend money to try to enforce our rules that were written a long time ago. And so we only allow household pets. Now we're fighting, now we're on court fighting that legal battle. And we live in South Russell to enjoy the protections like this ordinance, so that our neighbors don't have to spend that money to fight these battles. The village should protect all of us, and that's my main statement. Thank you.
Is there anyone that have a chance to speak? No. We have 15 minutes. Anyone who'd like a second chance to speak?
Anything else to address council as well? My name is Tom Fowler, 428 Cypress Side Drive. As the previous speaker, I'm also a lawyer with custody country states. And I think I speak for the majority of our homeowners within country states. The nice thing about South Russell is we live right on the edge of Kiva County, but we enjoy the benefits of Geogee County. Our board, our bylaws state that we cannot have privacy fences in our neighborhood, or more electric fences. If goats were allowed, I think the majority of our neighborhood would change dramatically. The aesthetics of the privacy fences would go up. People would want to keep out their neighbors, goats, farm animals, you name it. It would change the outlook, not only of our neighborhood, but I think of our town, which is one nice thing about our town. If I wanted to live in a closed-off neighborhood, not wanting to talk to my neighbors, I would live west of here. I would not live in South Russell. I think we should think long and hard about changing this ordinance and how it would affect the outlook and the neighborhood, community aspect of our overall town.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? Patrick, go on, too.
Sure, couple things. First, there's not been a running of the pigs. I mean, theoretically, every person in South Russell Village could have a pet pig right now. And we could celebrate that we all have a pet pig by having a running of the pigs at Bell 306. Has it happened? Would it happen? And I say this as I worked for the Northeast Ohio Airway Coordinating Agency in Wonka for five years. And the biggest issue we face in this region, it's a question that people do not talk about very often, is that we are not a region that is growing. And as we are a region that's not growing, we still are moving, and there is sprawl. And in that sprawl, we want new things. And I'm telling you, East Washington Street is going to be Bell Road at 306. It's just a matter of time. And those attributes that you have that is, as East Washington Street will be here. And the semi-rural nature of South Russell and then Geogee County will be gone. And it's already there in Maybridge, moving to South Russell. I do want to mention something that's cost prohibitive, that's specific to goats. Goats are not cheap. They're expensive. And then also to make sure that they're quiet, is you need to buy to. So there's actually an incentive to buy to. And think about what someone has had to do to get a pet goat here. I've had to do a petition. I've had to have two hearings. I now have another hearing. Probably going to have to do several readings at a council meeting to get it to even be considered. I think at the end of the day, there's some things that communities can do and that governments do. And I think as a community, usually sometimes we make things so impalatable that no one would ever consider such a thing. And that a community can do it on its own without a government. And I think in this case for a goat, I think it'd be pretty, make it feel pretty uncomfortable unless you had pre-exinguinating certainties to consider such things a goat. And that's what we've done. And it's important to our family. But just at the end of the day, I want to make the larger question, as a region, we really have to focus on trying to maintain that semi-rural nature of this Geogee County. Or it's gone. I will.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Carl?
Carl there, Chicago Louise Drive. I just want to respond with something like Patrick, because raised twice now, and it's the notion that we can all have pigs because it's not accurate. We could have a pet pig that is 15 inches by 24 inches. And when that code was amended in 2014, there's like three-quarters of a page of restrictions on what this pig can and can't be. It can't be this, it can't be that. There's even a section in there that says, what happens if you violate this section? So the notion that we can all have pigs is just, is just not accurate. And the most notable provision of that amendment to the zoning code in 2014 is that pigs have to be kept inside the residence as a pet. It cannot be kept outside in pens. It can only be outside, you know, incidental for short periods of time. And that's exactly not what's being proposed here. This is essentially being proposed as a pasture on residential street in a neighborhood with, you know, houses close to each other. So again, it's difficult not to object to the families, what they're trying to accomplish, because if I have a kids, I would do it myself. But there are other places they can move that we don't need to change the scheme here for everybody, just for this particular use. And we haven't changed it for pigs. We've allowed a small pig that is a household pet, which is quite different from this.
Anybody else who'd like to speak?
I should clarify that the goats actually will go inside.
It's not your time.
But you're right.
Yeah, I want to add a bit.
Yes.
Okay, so our goats, they're not just livestock, okay? They're not something that we're here, okay, goats, they're gonna, are they gonna make milk, no? Are we having them for bacon? No. They're not livestock. They're a part of our family. And, oh, we're not going to change law for just one family. It's not just for our family. It's for everybody, okay? And you guys, a few people have said that you guys want community, right? And that you don't want any livestock animals in South Russell. Well, South Russell is in Geogee County, and it's known for the county fair. I mean, I've heard, like, well, pretty much goats, people, when people think, well, when some people think goat, they think mountain goat. We're talking this little, this little guy, he's a man, little, little goat. And, I mean, they're not loud. When people think goat, they think screaming goat. That's a certain kind of goat. And because of this ordinance, I've actually met a few people that wanted to get goats. And because it was a goat, because pretty much when they wanted to get goats, people were thinking mountain goat. No, they wanted Nigerian dwarf goats, which are miniature goats. And these animals are not just livestock. They're a part of our family. Yes, they're not a dog or a cat, but you know what? Other animals can love, just like a dog or a cat. And yes, we could just move to Newberry, but you know what? Our family is here. We've made a beautiful home, and we can't just pick it up and move it. We can't. And if we wanted to start a farm, then we would have moved to Newberry. But we have a whole life here. We can't just dig a hole around our property and stick it in Newberry. And we don't want to start a farm. It's not just livestock. It's a part of our family. And we're not here to prove a point or any of that. We just want these animals to be accepted as not, oh, it's a goat. It's not, it's like other animals, too. If any of you guys have any questions about goats or any of that, you can ask us at the end. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've heard from everybody twice. The ones that speak, any other? Sir? Refresh me now. Let me, what do you mean again? Sorry. Tell me the... Okay. So I'll address the corral versus the privacy fence tonight. I think that one could be pretty certain that privacy fence has more to do with property, separating properties, or corral has more to do with containing a dog, in this case, a goat. And as I said, I really thought, I used to live at High School here in the way for, if you know, in the Heights, for 28 years. And so 30-some years later, four years ago, I came back here. And one of the reasons I came back here is the variety of the land and the variety of the people. And we have dog, and there's other dogs in our neighborhood. And like my wife said, I'm not going to say they're all manageable or managed. They're animals. But I will say, I'm not concerned about my property value in any way. My neighbors all around me maintain and invest in their properties. And I suspect a goat or goats here and there, pig here or there, isn't going to do much against my property in Charlotte County. They might in University Heights or Shaker Heights, because my neighbor's right here. But even under two acres, my neighbor's still over there. And, you know, this is not a vicious animal. It's not a predatory animal. And the fences don't have to be that high, the corral. And they can be very, very good-looking. In fact, the fence they put up is perfect. It's a corral. It's a stick-frame fence, and it goes with the rural territory. So I don't think that my property value will be affected. And quite frankly, if my property value is going to be affected by goats or animals, I came to the wrong city, because then I misjudged the value of what this city is. So, and again, myself, personal freedoms, when and where they merit. A fence can be codified. A number of goats can be codified. So you're not asking for a herd of goats or sheep. They can be codified. And these are very known good animal for a pet. There are other animals that would be in the litany of other known animals that are not good pets. And you don't see them as pets. Don't think this opens a place for tigers, or elephants, or monkeys. This is a family goat. And my property value is secure. And throughout my life, the way that I always took care of my son as a special needs guy was making sure that the American Disabilities Act was in place for him. And that is a strong federal act that protects people of special needs. And so that could also be codified.
Right, thank you all for being here and your comments tonight. We're gonna take, end this public hearing at 6:53. There is a council meeting starting at 7 o'clock, you're all welcome to stay. And you're also, if this is the time, if you have to go on the other side, thank you. Again, for both. Excuse me, I'm sorry to jump in here, give me one second.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eric.
Here. Here. We have minutes of our regular council meeting. My server is going forth and he changes the corrections to the council meeting minutes. During none have motion to approve. So we move by quarters. Second, I'll say by quarters, second by ten. All those in favor say aye. Aye. So minutes are approved. Got it all in the business room. Visitors, we have one visitor scheduled tonight. It's Melissa Nukelak.
Nukelak.
Nukelak. Request to waive permanent fees. Please speak into the microphone. You have five minutes. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Melissa Nukelak. I'm at 1580. Back in July, our new bill was burned down. And we've, um, we're just requesting that you recharge twice for the voting permit. And for the first bill and then for the second. We are just requesting that we be reimbursed for this. I wonder how it will.
May I make a comment? This has to do with the $3,143.63.
Yes.
It was not before. Before it did, and it's sort of up in the air. We get to discuss it. I don't recall a state meeting.
No, we didn't again.
Now we have a formal, I suppose, request for that.
Yes.
Is the building committee prepared to make a recommendation of the topic? You are not.
Okay. Building. Okay, our next building committee meeting will be on December the first. Our council, we will have a council meeting on December the 12th. I would imagine we'll have an answer for you by then.
Okay.
Thank you. Melissa was our only speaker who let us know, a visitor who let us know ahead of time. Anybody else would like to speak tonight?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Patrick. Or yours?
Mr. Mayor Council, my name is Patrick Holt, center of the 31 Vernon Park Drive. A rise today offers strong concerns related to the Bellon 306 paving project submitted by South Russell Village for consideration to Milwaukee's improvement. In December of 2021, South Russell Village placed a no left-hand turn sign into my family's property at Bellon 306. Destroying my wife's livelihood within six months. A 23-year-old business called MCR Studio, a preschool with an arts-based curriculum and art gallery. Art classes for children and seniors are also offered. While my wife leased the property, my parents own the property. My mother and father, Darren and Harold Holtz, are pioneers. They helped bring rural healthcare to South Russell in 1980. The village action of placing no left-hand turn signs destroyed that property. But it's really the lives that have been impacted. Kids who don't have a school, seniors who don't have a creative outlet during the day, five jobs lost, and 60 artists, mostly Jugga residents, who lost the venue. Now the village has the temerity to ask for Milwaukee for funding to improve Bellon 306 while my family fights for our own livelihood and access there, which is retained by the village. I offer testimony on November 4th before the Milwaukee Executive Committee registering these concerns formally. I'd like to ask for my testimony before Milwaukee replays into this evening's meeting minutes. I think it's helpful content for residents. In the South Russell phrase, a Milwaukee paving project at Bellon 306 with no public engagement for months. They're testing an asphalt paving sealant adjacent to my backyard garden, which was mentioned at the previous hearing. Preferably they quit us this summer. That will defy description. All items to discuss with Milwaukee as you establish your current state of abysmal transportation planning. At some point, South Russell maybe become serious about transportation planning, public engagement, and the impacts of your decisions. When does that happen? When do you say, what have I done at Bellon 306? The Milwaukee tip process will require this reflection. It's the price of admission. There are, these are serious people and serious programs. I want to thank Sherman Porter for giving me the chance to provide testimony before the streets committee, laying out the Milwaukee tip process, and also the fundamental values that must exist in any project to be successful. What is called the three Cs: cooperative, coordinating, and comprehensive. Could any one of those principles be applied to Bellon 306 now? Now. I'll provide testimony to the Milwaukee Board of Directors in December focusing on specific shortcomings of the Bellon 306 project that need to be scoped. And yes, the elimination of no left-hand turn sign will be addressed as part of the scoping process. Other residents will speak to the signs and actions of them. In reporting to Milwaukee and the county commissioners during the tip process, I'll judge SRB's progress under the following standards. One, council's work under ordinance 406.07.
Do what?
Under 406.07 of the village code of ordinances, council may override any decision of the chief of police. You may assume any of the powers delegated to the chief by a resolution adopted by vote of a majority of the members duly elected there, too. It's that simple. Council can't just get rid of the sign. Yeah, you can change its council. I'll communicate your work or non-work under 406.07 to Milwaukee and the commissioners who are now going to be asked to scope and defend your paving project as you seek further funding. Other items I'd ask Milwaukee to consider on your project, three Cs, as I said, cooperative, coordinating, and comprehensive planning within that project. Business impact of that project, certainly my family can speak to the business impact. And equity. Equity is an important thing, especially as it look at the Milwaukee strategic plan if you submit under that process. Does the project improve transportation mobility, connectivity and choice for our most vulnerable residents, children and young group? The no left-hand turn sign signed demolished access for an entire community there. You did not submit for granted in Milwaukee. You submitted to a process to be better. If you want to be better, start with getting rid of the sign. You're not being observed on that question. I yield a prayer.
Okay, any other visitor would like to speak tonight? Okay, name and address.
Hello. Hello, I'm Mason Holtz. That's my dad. I live on 31 Vernon Park. I would just like to say that since that sign has been put up, I am being completely honest. The life in that building has faded. Last year, I was an assistant preschool teacher, working with the preschoolers and helping them out for an hour and then doing the rest of my school. And let me tell you, it was so fun every single day listening to these little kids talk. What they said was just so cute. Oh, my gosh. I loved them so much. And you know what? On the last day of school, one of the kids came up to me and she said, Ms. Carr, it's me. Why won't I see you next year? And I said, and I said, I'm sorry, I can't tell you why. And she said, but I really want to see my friends next year. And you know what? That just really made my heart sink. And you know what? Did that sign, how did you put that sign up? To put that sign up, you need to do traffic studies. You need to do a process. You can't just stick that sign up. Okay? Because there is four ways that somebody could be coming in that car. Four ways. And that affects everybody on the road, okay? To turn into our building, you would have to go through the South Russell entrance and then in. And that really affected our business, okay? Because when you look at our sales in the gallery, you can see the number is different. Because before the sign was up, we had so many people coming in, and now there's nothing. And when I walk into those two buildings right now and I see nothing, it just really breaks my heart. Because I remember what it used to be like. And you know what? We don't, we don't care about the money, okay? We don't care that, yes, we don't have any revenue coming in. We could do it for free if we could, but we couldn't because the money was the laughter. The money was the art thing from the gallery, and it was the memories. And now those memories are nothing in that building. So when I walk in, I see nothing. Absolutely nothing. It breaks my heart to be sad. Thank you.
Okay, visitors, thank you. Melissa, this is the time when visitors are able to head off and do something else if you have something else to do tonight. There's, it's normal when visitors leave after the visit's second.
Honestly, I was very surprised.
It won't be a fund it, it's happened about a thousand times.
Okay.
Yeah, good day.
Thank you.
All right, we are now to the mayor's report. Twenty items to talk about. Tim, have you even talked about Charles' project? Have you heard of Charles' simple project in Zoom?
Yes. As soon as we get a chance, we're going to put it together. We're looking at ways of protecting it a little bit better than it was. It's the, uh, artwork, you might say, is laminated to the bottom of the flexi glass. And we're going to seal it because that goes right onto the wood and there's slacks in the wood that goes directly to the ground. And we don't want that moisture coming up through to get to the artwork. And we think that's what happened before. So we're going to seal the entire thing and then put the artwork on it and then seal the entire thing, then put it back out.
I've been impressed with Charles' efforts to make sure this works.
It looks great.
Uh, second thing, I had a couple of comments I remembered from the Ohio Municipal League Convention about multitasking. I remember hearing about this from Professor Berger about it's impossible to multitask. I'm three, street commissioner and I are meeting with the resident. They have $5,000 and talking to them about their goal really is a lighted flight pole. And I said, well, we already have one on the Bell Road property. Let's consider one on the East Washington side property. I think it would look spectacular if we set a whole East Washington park to start to have a, an American flight that would look terrific. So we talked today with the group, and they're still thinking about what they want to do. So really, there's no action. We've talked about the central retention base. You do notice now when you look at the central retention base, you can see the one neighbor's house. And I don't know if the landscaping is needed or not, but we talked about it. Eric has advised us just on the whole thing, wait a year or two before we do any landscaping. The guy with the tent with me, Mont, still needs the yard, and I don't think he's going to be coming to us for the dirt. Hopefully, the, um, the idea of a yard sale would be on the next park committee meeting agenda. At the last park committee, we had a discussion with Greg Pike's daughter about a tree, and no decision has been made yet. We met with a couple of people who were very interested in our cemetery, the condition of it. They provided us with some wet and forgets to clean it. And they have been involved with Chagrin Falls Historical Society, doing presentations where you would actually go to the cemetery and somebody would step up from behind the tree and say, hi, I'm so-and-so, I'm buried here. And they do a little activity. It's worked well at Chagrin Falls Evergreen Cemetery. It might be something we want to consider here, considering that we do have somebody from the war of 1812 buried in our cemetery.
The wet and forget mayor, is that for us to use, for Tim to use? What's the?
Yeah, he's the father. He gave to us a donation, said, you know, try this out, gifts and things and everything.
I'd love to be there when you do. I'd like to watch your help.
It's a long process. It takes weeks after you apply for, for the colors to grow.
Then I'm actually stay there for it.
Rees across America, they're looking for volunteers Saturday. I have Saturday, November 20th, that's wrong. It is Sunday, November 20th, from noon to 1:30. They have to identify, I think it's 862 veterans raised. And that's, that's a process in a huge cemetery. So they're looking for volunteers if you'd like to go out.
So that's just ID, not placing reeds, it's too early?
I, I think what they're doing, I'm not sure, but I think they're putting just a flag there for no reason. And then they come back on, um, on Saturday.
Like the week before.
Yeah, I think it's on Saturday, December 17th, they do the actual placing of the reeds. Public records training, frankly, was brutal. Two people spoke from 10 o'clock, we had 15 minute break, and it went to 1:15. I did not. Tim stood in for me at the dedication of the Flowing Meadows Butterfly Garden, which was something, you look at our butterfly garden, this, this is on a hill, it's got a lookout area. They really went all out. It's just interesting to see what they did. Hats off to the Cats Den Garden Club. They planted those 1,000 daffodils in the pouring rain and took them about an hour. And they were on their hands and knees for most of it in the mud. But they do it all the time, so they're very happy. Yesterday in here, it was a Papa Lake Homestead Association. They continue, and the chief and I usually attend many of these as we can. They get the largest turnout and the happiness, the laughter, the applause. Spirit was just amazing. I guess it must be there all the time, but I was really impressed because.
Seven o'clock.
Seven, well, okay, you didn't find, I was simply downstairs and you could hear us, because obviously it was a very good meeting. So things went out pretty well. Um, I got a call from Team D.O.A., uh, Team D.O. about some business opportunities. And then they connected us with Jugga Growth and talked to them. They, basically, the first thing they recommend is we could develop a database of all the businesses that we have. So I'm going to work with Sean, the fire marshal, and other people to figure out what we have down there and how they could help. Councilman Berger and I met with a candidate for the position of the village representative for the mayor. He's coming on November 29th, and if we see a fit, if he sees a fit, we'll be appointing him in December. Chagrin Drive Dispatch had an executive committee meeting over in Brexville to purchase a vehicle, and they're having a big meeting on December the 2nd. Ped and Safety Council and Beliki is going to be there to see how the trailer, the Methodist Church in Chagrin, and it's a good way to see how these groups operate. Biggest thing I picked up was a Zoom meeting with mayors, we do it every other Wednesday, that when we start talking about restrooms, the mayor said, you don't have to button it bits. He said, just go on W's. So.
You can state bit.
Oh, pardon. Statement? Okay, yes.
Important clarification.
Right, because, I mean, someone has taken a quarter block.
Couple of quarter lines. Okay, let me pick that deal up. Okay, source group. But anyhow, um, the one we found was $49,900, and the price goes up in January. So what can we have to do to get on this Source Wall? Source Wall.
Um, I made one of the groups, like a consortium that we sometimes are part of, like what we had at the playground.
I don't know. All I know is Chagrin Falls has just done this, so it may be an easy way to find out how to do it.
Sure. It was called Source Wall that night.
Source Wall.
Source Wall.
Source Wall.
Tim, you know, the design meets those parameters. Is that it? We grabbed it, but there's two doors.
Right.
This is the one we, uh, I showed you all with. I think we saw this one earlier. This is the one we liked as the park committees looked at, park committees looked at. It could go online, which is what I did originally. It was $63,000. So that's why when I originally said we could put $70,000 down, uh, not knowing that you could go to Source Wall and pick it up to $49,900. But I did talk to the salesman, talking about $53,000. He said, just let me know in January the price will go up. So if we can get that expedited, if we can pick this off.
Are you trying to get that one listed?
Yes.
So we have another budget of the next year.
I'm sorry, save window console.
Oh, no, I haven't gotten that far. I'm just happy we could get it.
There's this included delivery. We forget it, and so where?
Haven't gotten that far.
Okay.
The one that I looked at is CFT, comes out of Ford. And I think it's the same Ford.
I have an email on Ford, an email to the distributor. The email from Royal Hills, that they just purchased.
That'd be awful. I think I have it coming up here in the property. Two Cleveland State University students want to film in our park over President's Weekend. They're going to have two actors, they're going to do a, about an hour of filming on Anson Road. They'll be getting us the paperwork to use the park to, dealing with the liability part. They do not want to reserve it because they just want to have the access to come when the weather is good. So it's just a liability issue, and they're going to give us the paperwork. Davey Tree was here this morning to replace some of the trees that had died at the wetlands. I was going out of town. Sorry, tomorrow I volunteer at the golf tournament given a year, see my 11 year. But I will watch the planning committee meeting on Thursday. And proposing that on January the 17th, we start looking at stormwater issues. And by the way, I was starting to have an open meeting with the community saying, let us know specifically what are your issues? I had a couple of questions, like, what's next? You put all this money back here behind the village hall, you don't work the banner book, what's next? So that was publicly till they're only talking about, but I threw that out. It's a date, you get it on the calendar, so we've got the newsletter will be coming just to say we bring people here to hear about their issues.
So that's the first meeting in January?
Yeah, it's on a Tuesday. I didn't want to tie up everything. It'll be on January the 17th. I think it's the day after Martin Luther. I'm sorry. Yes, it'll be January the 17th, which will be on a Tuesday. It'll be the day after Martin Luther King Day. But just to get some people here to hear what they have to say.
You have an evening meeting there to maximize participation?
Yes, I think that it's seven o'clock. Come here, give us your concerns, your comments. With the E-Sid coming, you know, you got some familiar to jump on E-Sid, others just take them because of E-Sid. I think it's a good way to really talk about it too much. That's it for the mayor's report. Let's choose the mayor. There is none fiscal officer, or yours?
First of all, we did today get another village hall request from South Lake HOA. They want to use village hall on November 30th at 7:30 approximately 20 attendees for their HOA meeting. So I'm off to that. So I've entered when in November 30th at 7:30 PM.
Can I have the other? Am I making one? Okay, uh, let's see.
Did it pause something, use anything else?
I don't believe so.
This is Southwick.
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion to allow Southwick HOA to meet at our hall on November 30th. On 8/22 at 7:30 PM.
Can we wait until 25?
I can wait until 25. Second.
Then move to the second discussion. All those in favor say aye. So motion passed. Thank you.
Um, second, I wanted you to know that, um, the state auditor was out last week. We talked about finishing up our 19th audit, so we should have those, um, results in the next few weeks. So once I get that, something that it's done, then we can begin meeting with all councils and have that set up every time. But for example, there's no policy issues. Regarding Treasury Investment Board, we admitted another applicant for that board. So I thought both interested candidates information to the board, so I don't know how we're going to proceed with that. But there's two candidates for that. And I did have a question regarding the thousand. Was it jackals or tulips? Because you said jackals.
Jackals.
So we can get it. We have Mark on the website, I want to make sure it's correct. And then the record meeting, that's not legal. And that's the one you guys need of it. It isn't bad, and if you have any people do it, but, um, if you do it online, you can do it however it's like, so it's a little bit, but you do learn a lot. And then by my way to distribute my reports, mayor, council, what are your questions?
Danielle, I do have one thing that I would like you to clarify, council. And that is, could you share with council the auditors' comments about, state auditors' comments about the audit process that we have in place since?
Fiscal auditor?
Yes, since then.
So, as you know, we do have a fiscal, we had fiscal auditor position. And that started because her old highland vice podium, now mayor, clerk of treasurer, um, administrator, and then there's a public order. We don't do the public order administrator, but we do, and then clerk of treasurer, combined one position. So by law, means the sponsor, I'm legally responsible for all religious funds. I, yeah, I did have concerns because now if we're going to a fiscal auditor, I don't want to be the one responsible for it and somebody else being there moving on your ground. And you said, um, for ORC, it is my legal responsibility, nobody else should touch any money. If you get another fiscal auditor, their job is to audit, not to move money. He also said it's not a position that's required by Ohio highland vice podium, as long as you follow the process. You did, if you have it in the past, Adam kind of did that on your behalf where he went through and made sure all the checks were accounted for, the check number, the bank rec. This is on, he did a separate bank rec. But I explained it in the process for doing it out of which the finance committee reviews the bank rec every month. They review the checks that went out, the outstanding is to be reconciled, and then they sign off on that every month. And he said, he felt that that was more than adequate, um, and that we realize the responsibilities. So there's something in the way we have meeting of all of your directors, it's long. Talk to them about it, you can, but he thought we are in a good position now.
Other questions of the fiscal officer? Solicitor.
I'm sorry.
Go real quick.
And tax, income tax collection. I know that with December ending, we are 22% ahead of, uh, last year. So, um, we're going to have an increase of 25%, 30% over 2021? The tax, in terms of tax collection, is that what?
Um, that's what it's looking like. And when I did talk to, um, CCA, because I reported last month, um, it does look like I, sources were receiving, I think there's revenue from, looked like they're pretty steady. So it's not like, you know, if you were in city, um, because we're a veteran community, of course, we come home, and people may go back to work, and maybe some of that additional funding, but it's not going to be big. So he thinks a lot of our increases are going to be good to stay. So right now, in the initial spike in budget, we have to go by what we're predicting in July. But after that, we can amend what we're going to expect in July.
Do you feel confident because of the wage increases are employers within the village?
Not that I'm supposed to stay home office workers.
Right, the three top were, um, people that they're also seeing the increase in, um, public communities. So the businesses across the board are raising raises.
Danielle, I notice, you know, we, uh, we have a $1.3 million budget deficit at the end of the year. Originally, we were going to have planning way back when, and it looks like it's going to be even remotely like that. Or we might even be in black at the end of the, at the end of the calendar year. Does that seem accurate to you?
Well, um, I think, I know we're down to $1,000, but we can have a year. Uh, well, the end of the year depends what those, um, Eric is saying, waiting on the retention from the banner book and the final for the votes. So I don't know whether it's all going to come in that.
Okay, I'm a spokesperson, solicitor, you're not against the science committee.
Thanks, Mayor. The finance committee, you met today, the 14th of November, 22, uh, at eight o'clock this morning. I, I do want to say that those meetings are, those minutes are not included in your council package because of the, uh, the lateness of the meeting today. So look forward to seeing those in your next council package. I'd like to make a motion to approve the construction progress payment to Mr. Escavator Incorporated in the amount of $47,537.77. So.
Second. Move to the second discussion.
Which project is this for?
This is for the central retention base. This is not the final payout or the?
You can vote, Chris.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fund balances. So move.
Move to the second of the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
And finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the credit card report, so.
Move to the second of the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Subject to you, any questions? That concludes the report of the finance committee.
All right, solicitors, four jurors.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Street commissioner, the four jurors.
I submitted my monthly report for October. Uh, one thing I'd like to add, uh, I did not receive information in time on the twenty-ninth. We got our trading day, received ten thousand pounds. That's all I had, five times. From nine to twelve.
Any other questions of the street commissioner? Moving on to the street committee.
Mayor, uh, the street committee met uh, a while ago and the minutes were up to your packet. Uh, a number of topics were brought up. Patrick and his family attended the meeting, which is nice to see that you needed involvement. Uh, what uh, should be addressed to council tonight is the question of the family life center retention pond. Uh, I understand from the street commissioner, uh, that uh, the cost could be split between the village and the family life center, half and half. Uh, I think our part is thirty-eight.
Seventy-four hundred.
Yeah, yeah. So is that the total cost?
That's the total.
So we're half of that?
Correct.
So you know, thirty-seven hundred for us, okay, approximately. The reason we would want to do that is because that retention pond feeds in through Chagrin Lakes. And is part of the stormwater control in this area, although, come on, it's not the village, is it?
It is that, it is that.
It's in Bay Harbor, right? Yeah. So it is in our interest, in our residents' interest, to do this, split the cost of the family life center and get the job done. I agree with the street commissioner, is ready to proceed with the project. Yeah, so um, let's uh, there's other discussion.
I do have one question.
Sure. This may have recommended we move forward. Go ahead, mayor.
Yeah, I would just like a reading by the solicitor. You know, given that this property is one, not an ardent, just valid. And two, um, is private property, you know, does it merit the expenditure of public funds to do this part?
Uh, I think the answer is yes. If not, so far, then you are abating a public nuisance, which keep in mind, it was a citation of a public nuisance. There are statute, there are codified ordinances. Um, the plan was not submitted within ninety days, so they do that that time period. And now I think council can abate the nuisance, but I would highly recommend that we make some sort of motion that this is the way you're abating the nuisance. And yes, it can be outside of the vote.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, how how are we doing this on the, so is the village paying for this? And the song, where is it coming out of the budget? Are we paying for it, no reverse in us, or each people paying the vendor their half?
Uh, the preferred number would be each pays half. And I think though, in this case, the village is going to pay the whole amount and then seek reimbursement from the family life center. So the contractor does the job, the contractor gets paid, we get reimbursed, and the family life center should get the job done. And the solicitor mentioned about abating a nuisance. The street commissioner, as I recall, sent out a notice.
Correct, the building department.
Building department, sorry. Sent out a notice to the family life center to abate the nuisance that they had created with an intention to maintenance on their retention, the retention pond. So that is just a recommendation there and uh, if you'd like, I can do it now or we can bring it to a resolution tomorrow and see.
And one further question, driven that. Given the fact that we are recommending that we pay the bill in full, should there be a contractual agreement between the owner of the family life center and the village? You know, my concern is that we pay the entire bill and then how do we compel the other individual to pay? So solicitor, your reading.
Yeah, actually, I thought when we first started this whole process, we should have some sort of agreement. Then we went around, I think it's exactly the same. We're gonna take on the full bill and pay it in full. I don't know how we can force the reimbursement um, from family life center unless we were to go forward and do some sort of similar action.
I don't just use rich theory, but rather than do that, uh, the motion would include language to have an agreement between the village and the life center as to its own cost. Each side pays half, we're funding the money, they pay us back within days. I would plan on including that in the motion.
But absent that agreement, I'm, you know, I'm concerned.
Well, it would be predicated on that agreement.
But that has the same teeth as a contract.
Oh, yeah.
The motion would not have the same teeth as a contract.
No, what I'm saying is, the contractor doesn't get to work until we have that agreement with the family life center.
Right, so that was my question, is why do you think it'll work? Or the agreement can be, you know, executed, I guess. I mean, I think we had a sample. Am I wrong, may I, do we only prepare a meeting? I know we talked about one. I'm not a hundred percent sure if the agreement was prepared. But one would be prepared and they would have to execute it and agree, but not before a contractor would collect it.
We had, the village has had communication, family life center CEO or whatever, her partner, five of us, um, on this topic, and they have indicated they will pay half upon the payment.
So in your motion, you're going to make sure we have something in writing that we can take to the family life center and say, sign it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we don't engage the contractor until that happens. And we don't pay the contractor without agreements in place. So instead of fighting this, the concerns of council, we get a agreement with the family life center that they're gonna pay us back. Once that happens, the street commissioner and the mayor go ahead with the contractor. Contractor does the work and gets paid by the village, we get reimbursed, go ahead.
You would also like some sort of release for the work that we're doing on their property? And that the contractor and or even the village, I don't know, probably would be able to assist me? Some sort of work on a property, some sort of release.
I'm not reasonably confident the street commissioner and several street employees might be on site to ensure that what's done, it's needed to be done.
The village will do the trucking. We are gonna do the hauling, but it's only going mild on the road, is why we obligated to do that. And then also cut the cost structure, we're gonna be giving that to your trucks.
Is the soil is going below, is that right?
Correct.
We want the tops to out. And then today to get a new cost to us.
Do you have?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's okay.
Yeah.
Third. So you'll leave it, you'll write up?
Contract and release.
Contract and release. Yeah.
Now that's, that's. It's coming out of stormwater, you don't want.
I think after we just add into, I believe there's, well, I don't know if it's full now, but I know I have to update it. But I'll check. If not, I could maybe get somewhere else.
There's a, it should come out of stormwater. That's what it is.
Correct.
And maybe also, someone's just thinking about.
Okay, we'll have to start writing this down.
I bet. What about the uh, federal church, about the agreement, in fact, this is a public nuisance in the agreement. Um, the reason I say that is again, you have a, you have a process for the, you know, codified ordinances. I'm just concerned slightly that it doesn't need to make sure we follow the process.
I agree, but we found a nuisance from the building inspector. Family life centers been notified. They have ninety days to take action, they did not. The village was found that created a public nuisance. And we are moving to correct the public nuisance in a fiscally approved manner by obtaining half of the cost from the family life center rather than all of the costs.
Council, you did.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Once it's declared a public nuisance, do you do that more than once? You have, I realize that it's all that we need to.
It would not surprise me if it becomes a public nuisance five years from now. And we go through this process again. I mean, I don't remember when it cleaned it out last, but it's been a while.
It's been a while.
But I think Ruth is to her point, you know, once it's declared a public nuisance once, that doesn't give it.
No, it's not a common public nuisance that allows us to fix the problem without, not really their permission.
We are, we are abating.
Yes.
Even though there are limits to having it, we are abating, we are trying to fix it.
I suppose you could say because they didn't submit the plan in ninety days, they have weight and claim that it's not the public.
That's common cause.
Yeah.
So we go through all the points that we're getting in this agreement, if there's an assignment, so we're all on the same page.
I think so, you can move along with it, right?
Yes.
And the street commissioner can move along, that is, that needs to be done too. I know that the village abate the public nuisance found in the family life center detention pond by engaging a contractor to clean out the detention pond and thereby abate the public nuisance. So long as an agreement between the village and the family life center is entered into and executed prior to the start of the work that specifies the reimbursement of half the cost from the family life center to the village and provides for a release such that the contractor selected, the street commissioner and the street commissioner's employees can enter and exit upon the property, the family life center without having to bill a tenant. So move.
Second. Discussion. This is a good one.
When we move forward, some of your roll calls, this is a few months ago, I mentioned that in previous.
Yeah, so call should be done, yes.
Yes.
Um, you have Cameron?
Aye.
Cameron?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Bye, thank you.
Yep, and other things in the uh, uh, street committee's report is, um, the street commissioner desires to sell on gov deals two leaf flowers that are no longer used to be a village. Uh, he would uh, therefore move that these two leaf flowers are no longer useful to the village and should be sold on gov deals.
Do we wait till January because of this legislation we got to pass? And usually in January, we have a whole list of, I was thinking about that.
Sure, great. Are you waiting for January? We, we certainly should.
Or you can do a download, it requires legislation. It's not just.
To put stuff on gov deals.
Yeah, you have to declare them like useless or something.
What are you waiting to put that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I like, we're starting to gather, as we go through the inventory, we want to, we want to get here. Um, as we go through those lists, you can put everything together, then January, do that. That's okay.
That's fine. Start. I might as well, I guess I will draw that motion if I actually finish it, but I don't think I did. Uh, and the last thing for the street committee, mayor, um, is that the country estates is indicated, they would also like to form an ESID for the purposes of pond four. But they have some issues with the, the mud due to fire and the drainage that goes north on pond four through the, through the park, what is now the park. Uh, they would like to explore an ESID erosion control, similar to what Parkland's doing in the same process. So the ESID are starting to catch on within the village. And then perhaps uh, a number of projects will be done in the next year or so. And Parkland's coming up too, mayor, for that. Have any comments by councilman Bell?
I'm just commending on that lengthy motion you brought up.
All right. I will blame the solicitor for making that.
We are now at the building committee.
Thank you very much, mayor. Under Tadde, from the events of November third, twenty twenty-two, building meeting, any questions? Councilman Cannon, I have two questions for you. Is there an update on the software installation where we're at? Still no update. Uh, Ruth Brizwald says that what she has, it just points working quite well. And she's patiently waiting. And we really don't know the reason why it's taken so long, but Ruth doesn't seem to be very reconciled. Okay. Any else? Um, and the second question was, um, will there be an annual report from the building department in terms of the twelve dollars collected in recent fees and permits? I saw the, I saw the October report, which to my memory seems to be significantly higher than the previous year. But I'm wondering if we can have some sort of annualized fact maintenance. We will have it for you, yes, thank you.
Other questions of the building committee? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I've always been proud of South hustle and I'm fully proud of South hustle tonight. You know, we had a nice group of people here, a couple different views on the same subject. And I thought it was carried out quite well. Uh, Mr. Phillips, may I have the permission to say a word to?
It's your meeting.
May I say my thank you for being here tonight? And I respect the reflections that you have, okay? When I was very thoughtful growing up in northwest Pennsylvania, my grandfather surprised me with a puppy. Collie, Turner Shepherd mix. And I named him Rusty. And Rusty and I was, we were in separate. He would walk me to the bus stop every morning. And in the late afternoon, he was there with. When we went to church, we walked to church together. And he would wait outside on the lawn of church until master go. In nineteen sixty-one, my parents sat me down and said, well, we'll move into Warren House. Dad hasn't drawn up a Warren House. It is a city, but you can't bring Rusty. That broke my heart. They said that Rusty will stay with my grandparents. There was a lot of open space for Rusty to play and jump and run. I'd be a dog. But that really, that really hurt. So I know what it's like to love a pet. And I know what it's like when a pet loves me. Thank you very much for being here tonight. That's it.
Any other comments about the building committee? Police chief, four jurors.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I have submitted a local report. And the divisions that I just want to note that are hybrid police crews who arrive today in partnership and will not be carried over at the funds for next year. So we appreciate it.
And Chief, do you want to let people know that the one of two is under conversion right now?
One of two is under construction, police part of it right now, it should be done tomorrow.
Questions of our police chief? Safety committee.
Um, safety committee met on November third. The minutes are included as part of your council packages. Subject to any questions?
Questions of the safety committee? HR committee.
HR committee will meet Thursday this week. Um, the only, I have a business for tonight. Uh, as part of the finance committee meeting this morning, we had a discussion. Uh, we are at that time of the year when we talk about increases in compensation for our employees. Um, at the previous meeting, I provided you with some documentation, uh, some reports that looked at various communities by size, by location in the state of Ohio, by union, non-union, and the expectations from those areas. Um, and I'm wondering if uh, council is prepared tonight to move forward on that issue? The recommendation from finance and from HR is that we offer a four percent raise to our employees based on all the information available. And so I would open the floor for comments, questions.
So, you have a CPI issue?
The the consideration was that because of the insurance cost increase, which sixteen plus percent?
Sixteen plus.
Okay, that that was a significant increase in costs that the village bears. And so in looking at that and trying to um, tie that together with direct compensation, uh, that's how we arrived at a four percent number. If there's a suggestion or more discussion, um, we're we're the one to entertain it.
I'm going to spell this time.
So you got a motion?
Okay, so, um, motion that the compensation to the village employees effective January first, twenty twenty-three shall be increased by an amount of four percent.
So.
Part-time, full-time, all? Um, we did not differentiate between full and part-time.
Correct.
And the trust, if you say. Right, exactly.
Second, move to the second discussion. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Or those, motion passed. This philosophy, you have the news tomorrow?
And then now I can finish the budget, so hopefully we will have a.
Um, and that's all from HR. Any questions or?
Question of the.
Our member, Catamount.
All right, we are at the property committee view.
Okay, thank you very much, mayor. Uh, once again, you found the minutes of our October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two village park committee. Any questions? Okay, now, we had a special progress committee that we also found, um, events to Paddock on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Now, the subject at hand was pavilion rental can also uh, village plot the usage. Um, I spoke with with Ruth Brizwald, and she's responsible for the pavilion rental. And uh, we went over the uh, the form. She has absolutely no problem with that form. She says it's working great. And I've always been one to, you know, you go to the people who use it, right? And uh, she thinks it's fine the way it is. Now, tonight, I will be introducing I'll be the first of three readings for uh, the village of South Russell campus. Okay? And you can find that in the back of that.
We have spent a lot of time figuring this point, and it seems to be the best best compromise in getting things done and making it streamlined.
Is there anything else, Ruth, to say?
No.
Uh, I felt that asking, uh, councilman Bell, any questions on the building? I apologize for that.
You go to the other.
No, okay. That's it.
All right, questions of the property committee? Um, I'm going to interrupt before we do public utilities. The street commissioner was ahead of me. This is the uh, you you've given me the face of, but I didn't get it out in time. This is the Delo Rocky Mountain restroom. This is what uh, Moreland Hills purchased for forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, and I'll just uh, you're talking, we'll look at that. That's um, you can just see what it looks like and see what Moreland Hills got in its price. Thank you. All right, public utilities.
Mayor, the public utilities meeting was previously scheduled last week, didn't happen due to a number of scheduling conflicts among the members and participants. Uh, yeah, this is May. In your packets, uh, is the Parkland petition, and I looked at the petition order, and all eleven households appear to be on board just by signing the petition for the purposes of establishing an ESID addressing the Parkland damage. And it's come to my attention, I may be getting an assignment from a contractor of around sixty-five thousand dollars to fix the dam. And I don't know if that's real or if that's something that is in the worst, but that would be about twenty percent, about eighty percent less than their consultants originally forecasted. So that's, we'll see what happens with that, but from the village's point of view, there's legislation in packages, it's ordinance, which is the next step in the Parkland dam ESID, sending it to the county for creation of an ESID for the purpose of repairing or replacing the Parkland dam. And I suppose we'll do that that under resolutions and ordinances, but Parkland is the first community in South Russell that is pursuing ESID for erosion control via this mechanism. So the village's job is to review the legislation, goes to the county, and then after that, it's between the county and the residents for the purposes of fixing their dam. But it sets a template for other communities, country states, for example, and how to do it, it's really not that difficult compared to what would have been if the village had done this and then built Parkland people. So let's hope their estimate is accurate and that moves quickly. The mayor will do that in the ordinances and resolutions, and uh, the next uh, public utilities meeting, I would like to set it for December second at nine AM. If councilman Berger is uh, available, and we'll let him know, and he'll provide an agenda for that day. And also, I forgot to mention for the streets committee, same day, December second, seven thirty AM, street commissioner's office if councilman Bell is uh, available. Yep, okay. So two meetings in one day, hopefully one hour each, and subjecting accounts to councilman Berger that completes the public utilities.
Just just a piece of official information on Parkland. Uh, the information was provided to me uh, by Bruce Hendricks, who was running the private from our block. Um, they saw the um, work that Mr. Excavator did for us in the the two projects, and they went out and contacted Mr. Excavator. So that's the firm that has come back to them and said, we think we can fix the problem far cheaper than what you may quote it. So it's not a, I mean, legitimate, obviously, firm, so there's some confidence that their numbers, uh, at least on first cut, are reasonable. Uh, so, uh, whether Parkland proceeds with the ESID or they just decide to do this out of pocket, I don't know. They're they're sort of talking over their options at this point, but uh, they have very positive news all the way around, so. Um, it's good for our residents.
Correct me if I'm wrong, solicitor, but we approve this ESID legislation for them, it goes to the county, they can back out if they wish, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All right, any other questions of the public utilities? All right, this is the last thing I'm going to say about restrooms. Um, with this one, and I don't know if this is correct, that um, when this is discussion with the mayors, they bought, uh, some of the mayors bought their restrooms to Parkland. And I know we have some Parkland funds left over.
I have to look at eligible projects where is it drinking water, state revolving bond, or clean water?
Sanitary, he was using sanitary. I'm surprised. He's saying, this is what you do. I'll be passing it to him. All right.
Well, if you look into a sanitary sewage system, I guess you could do it, right?
No, this is a horrible one that used for events. He said, oh, you could buy it.
Not this.
No, no. Okay, we are at ordinance and resolutions. Um, we'll have the HR, we'll be the first one for el leachment.
My there will be a resolution of appreciation for L. el leachment. Um, now is our motion to adopt?
Yeah, that's a good to, to defer to me and adopt from everybody's side.
Okay, so who's so we, so motions to adopt?
Exactly.
Discussion. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Or those?
What was the second decision?
Okay.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Porter?
All right.
We uh, we continue to table the next ordinance, uh, which is the pace schedules. We hope they have that for you uh, by the next council meeting, okay? So.
All right.
Is that important information, Chris?
Yeah, we're waiting for our outside consultant to do a, they're doing a survey of surrounding communities to make sure that our numbers are aligned with what other communities are paying, et cetera. So we hope to have that information shortly.
Okay. All right, we are now, uh, councilman Porter.
Uh, yes, this is the Parkland ordinance. I'd like to introduce and consider for adoption a resolution approving a petition for the creation of the Giada County Erosion Control Special Improvement District. The mayor has the district's authority for the levy and special assessments for erosion improvement projects declaring an emergency. Would you wait further readings?
Second, we'll call.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Berger? Aye.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Berger? Aye.
All right. Resolution passed. Next one is also with public utilities.
I'd like to introduce and consider for adoption a resolution declaring the necessity for and authorizing the transfer of funds by the village of South Russell from the Headwater Restoration Project Fund, the income tax general fund, directing the fiscal officer to prepare and forward a petition for said transfer to the Ohio Tax Commissioner pursuant to Ohio Revised Code section five seven zero five point one five and five seven zero five point one six, declaring emergency, move away further readings.
Second, we'll call.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Berger? Aye.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Berger?
Resolution passed. Next one will be councilman Cannon.
At this time, I would like to introduce and consider for adoption a resolution declaring the necessity for and authorizing the transfer of funds by the village of South Russell from the Nature Works Playground Fund to the Income Tax General Fund, directing the fiscal officer to prepare and forward petition for said transfer to the Ohio Tax Commissioner pursuant to Ohio Revised Code section five seven zero five point one five and five seven zero five point one six, declaring an emergency, wait further.
Second. Second, we'll call.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye. Berger?
Move to adopt.
Second. Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Bye, Dan.
Okay. Let's see. I'd like to introduce and consider for adoption a resolution declaring the necessity for and authorizing the transfer of funds by the village of South Russell from the Lake Louise Bridge Fund to the income tax general fund, directing the fiscal officer to prepare and forward a petition for said transfer to the Ohio Tax Commissioner pursuant to Ohio Revised Code sections five seven zero five decimal one five and five seven zero five decimal one six, declaring emergency and waiting further readings.
Second, we'll call.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Uh, motion to adopt? Second.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye. Berger? Aye.
Resolution passed. Ruth, would you like to get involved and read this next report?
Sure. Uh, let's see if I can figure out where we are. Introduce and consider for adoption an ordinance to approve current replacement pages that South Russell had applied for, and since declaring an emergency.
Will you read?
Move to.
Second, we'll call.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Mark.
Public utilities, man. I'd like to introduce and consider for adoption a resolution authorizing payment of cost to village engineers, planning and assessment activities, pre-project development, and central retention basin project, eligible stormwater management project, currently PRPA fund, is that okay?
Arpa.
Arpa, S and A, thank you. Arpa fund, declaring emergency, move to wait further readings.
Without the engineer here, we don't, we can't have a dollar, huh? Or a two dollar, not when you don't have it, so.
What's the approximate?
We just.
Like fifty-seven?
No, this was for, um, the engineering costs associated with the central retention basin, so Eric was supposed to get that three, but it was four and a half. So please do first reading, which is, um, before, we can run it out to you in a real quick. I was also thinking, um, for the, for the, um, for the life center, we could use the Arpa funds.
Sure.
Because it's just stormwater rather than using the storm on the other. So we've got, okay. Is it part of the budget if we don't have enough money for it?
Right.
Great idea.
But I think we have to pass it, or it's a resolution, just like we did. We need to get that back to the management.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Um. So that's first reading, okay?
Yeah.
We're still on Mark's, okay?
Yeah, it's on it, man. Okay. Uh, I'd like to introduce and consider for adoption a resolution authorizing payment of cost for re-vigitation and reinforcement of the village hall headwater section three nineteen NPS restoration project from the Arpa fund and declaring an emergency, brief meeting.
What were you on that one to, would you second?
Same point, okay. First reading.
All right, I'm Chris, who are due last one.
Introduce the ordinance, admitting chapter one zero six six of the county law ordinance is the village of South Russell declaring an emergency, move to wait further readings.
I get somebody second, please. Second.
Governor, I'm looking.
We'll call.
Yeah, well, this, that was the one.
That was the last one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna wait for him, it's already.
I did, we're, we're.
He's getting away from the government now. We'll call.
Um. Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Move to adopt.
Second. Kenton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Motion's passed, Bill.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to ratify this bill's list of thirty October twenty twenty-two in the amount of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. So move.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
We need roll call.
All those in, uh, roll call.
Kenton? Campbell?
Flitby?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Berger?
Okay, uh, Bill's motion passed. We're, uh, new other?
Um, Kenton? Campbell? Um, I don't, I, this is badly, sorry, I didn't get everything done I wanted to, but I had a lengthy discussion with Joni Manton. I can't remember if I even brought this up in the last one. So Anastasia is sort of our reporter, but it is local room. So Joni's taking over the district part. She and I consent to leave by the end of the week, and she wants to open some of our older articles, what we have, for something in the paper, and she didn't have the time, just. So that was nice. And I was only on the phone with her for about forty-five minutes, so.
And I'll take your information, please, as well as.
I did. Great.
But the term was a big deal.
I want to compliment our mayor on the great job he did, uh, Mr. Bethan today over at St. Bruce's. What a nice program, and he gave opportunity for many of them to speak their truth, and I think they appreciated it very much.
Here it is.
Um, Flitby?
I'm not.
Porter?
Just to note that uh, it looks like turnout in the midterm election for the village of South Russell is almost seventy percent, which is way above what it often is for a midterm election, and uh, councilman Berger, councilman Flitby, myself, and other residents of the village, uh, were election people at Green School, and it was a fairly continuous parade of people coming in to vote and speaking of veterans and voting, uh, it was great to see. Thank you.